Good evening, everyone. We are here for a city council meeting on December nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen. We'll start first with our roll call and determination of quorum.
Nordstrom, Drew, Solomon, Doyle, Estes, Scott, Laurenti, Wright, Modrick, Roberts. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Now, in place of our invocation, we're going to be entertained by Bells of the Hills. So come on up, and they will be performing "Lo How a Rose Aire Blooming." Very nice, thank you very much. Now if we could have everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America.
Thank you, everyone. Now we'll go on to the adoption of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes to the agenda, or if not, can we have a motion to approve? Please. I have a motion by Jerry Wright and a second by Steve Laurenti. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now we have a couple of recognitions down front. We have a couple of long-term city employees retiring at the end of this month. Tom Sennasak and Dale McCabe, both from the Police Department. And I have personally worked with these men for decades, and it's been a treat. And I know how dedicated they are as public servants, and we're real proud to be honoring them tonight. I'll turn this over to Chief Carl Jagerus.
Thank you, Mayor. So tonight, the Rapid City Police Department is going to be recognizing two long-term employees who are retiring, and in total, they have fifty-seven years of service to the Rapid City Police Department and to the City of Rapid City. So first off, Lieutenant Tom Sennasak here. He currently is the most senior employee in the department. He has thirty-one and a half years of service. He started in nineteen eighty-five. I was in middle school at the time. So while I was in middle school, Tom was working as a new patrol officer, and he's worked in many other capacities since. In nineteen ninety-one, he became a detective and was responsible for solving many cases using his exceptional interview and interrogation skills. He's played an integral role in the department's annual guns and hoses blood drive. Over the years, he's helped coordinate United Blood Services to receive thousands of pints of blood, thanks in large part to his enthusiasm and his sense of humor. He's the guy that goes on the radio and bantered back and forth with the Fire Department. And really, I think the reason why we've been able to recruit so much blood donation over the years is our competitive nature to battle with the Fire Department. So he has been our department's training administrator. He supervised our records division, and in two thousand and eight, he received his sergeant stripes and worked as a patrol sergeant for several years. In two thousand and ten, he went back to Investigations and supervised for two years, and in two thousand and twelve, he was promoted to lieutenant. Tom is a dedicated public servant who clearly loves his job. I want to thank you very much for all of your hard work on behalf of the department, and wish you well in your retirement.
Thank you.
Yep, you bet. Okay, next, can we have Sergeant Dale McCabe come up? Okay, Sergeant McCabe has a little over twenty-six years of service at the Rapid City Police Department. He started in September of nineteen ninety, again, while I was a junior in high school. And at that time, he started as a patrol officer, worked four years in that capacity. That was at a time in the nineteen nineties when we had a lot of gang activity, and he had an active role in our Rapid City area gang task force. And he took a leadership role in training other officers on how to gather intelligence related to that. In nineteen ninety-four, he was assigned to Investigations as a detective, and in nineteen ninety-six, he was reassigned to our UNIT office, which is our Unified Narcotics Enforcement Team. Little did he know that he was starting a sixteen-year adventure to combat drug activity in our community. So for the first eight years, he was a detective, and for the second eight years of that assignment, he was the supervisor of the unit as a sergeant. In twenty-twelve, he became a sergeant in people crimes and investigations again, and after a short stint as working as a patrol sergeant. So to summarize, the last twenty years of his twenty-six-year career, he's been supervising our response to violent crime and drug activity in Rapid City. He's been involved in many, many cases and has made a serious impact and put a huge dent in illegal drug activity in our community. He's spent his career getting violent criminals off the street, and Rapid City is no doubt safer because of his dedication and focus. So I want to wish you well on your retirement, and we appreciate your service. Thank you very much. Dale's family needs to come forward after we take a quick picture. We'll have you join us as well.
Next on the agenda, we're going to hear from an update regarding the Literacy Council, and I would call on Chris Heacock and company.
Thank you. Yes, we're all volunteers and board members with Literacy Council of the Black Hills, and we're here to give you an update. It was about, it was a little over three years ago when we entered into a memorandum of understanding with the library, which provides our, a place for our resources, a place for us to tutor, and our referral number. And it's been a great partnership. We want to thank you for that. We went from six students during that time to now serving over sixty students. And so we really feel like our partnership with the library has been a very good thing, and we've been working together to, the city core value of safe, healthy, inclusive, skilled community. I'll just, we'll do just some brief introductions here. I have been with Literacy Council since its inception many years ago, when it was an all-volunteer organization, and have been the president of the board now for the last four years, and have been a tutor, tutored over thirty different, I mean, tutored over ten different students over those years, and am a tutor trainer. And I'll let everyone introduce themselves.
Okay, I'm Diane Grant, if you can see me. I have been a tutor for three years, and in May, I became the program coordinator for the Literacy Council, so I'm the one employee. Thank you.
I'm Peggy Saunders, and I've been with the organization for about fifteen months. I'm a tutor. I teach a conversation class with some other teachers, and I manage the curriculum resources, and I'm on the board.
I'm Lois Faser. I'm a tutor with the Literacy Council, a board member, and I've also been working to facilitate the conversation class that we're offering evenings at the library.
So our mission is to provide free, individualized tutoring. We tutor one-on-one, and all our tutors are volunteers, and we provide group educational experiences such as our conversation class. And what our goal is then is to help people meet their personal goals and to enhance their contributions to the community. And so what are our students' goals? Well, to give you an idea of what we do, a lot of the goals have to do with being a good worker, performing their job better. So eighty percent of our students have goals that have to do with improving their work performance. Many of our students are parents, and over half of our students have children that are under eighteen. So a lot of goals have to do with sharing a book with their children, being able to interact with teachers. They're excited when they can understand what's going on at a teacher conference and that type of thing. Health and basic needs, like reading medicine labels, understanding how to make a nutritious meal, figuring out bill paying and different things like that. And sixty percent of our students want to increase their community involvement. They want to be volunteers. They want to get their citizenship, different types of things like that. So that gives you an idea of the type of goals that we're helping our students meet. So we have our individualized tutoring and our conversation classes, and to offer this and to be able to do this, we need to provide training and continuing education and support to our volunteer tutors. And we do that then. I'm a tutor trainer. Lois is experienced in ESL tutor trainer. Another, Joni Johnson. We're pro-literacy certified so that we can go ahead and train our tutors to work with adults, because adults is our focus. We also are tutoring right now a couple of high school students that have requested our help because they needed help. So our materials and our training allows us to help both high school students and adults who are having trouble with their basic skills. We also offer continuing education through tutor talk time discussions, where we have information and an opportunity to learn more online resources, printed materials. That's also why it was very important for us to have, we have a one-part-time person, Diane, who can provide that support to our tutors and our students, and actually match the growing number of students that we have. And the John Tivikuravich Foundation has been funding a coordinator for us, since that was a need that we couldn't meet all through volunteers. So we're so appreciative for the library. Like I said, the phone referrals, our resources. Peggy, like she said, she works with the librarians in our curriculum and making sure that that is there for our students, and it's also there to check out for anyone. It's not just exclusively. We have leisure readers, things like that, for our low-level readers, and so we supply that need for them. And of course, we're United Way Agency. Our other main partner is the Career Learning Center, and they are government-funded, and what we do is fill in the gaps that they can't meet. Funding for adult education has gone down. There's less funding for it. It's tougher to meet those needs. So our volunteers are available a variety of hours, like when the Career Learning Center is not open. And with people's work schedules, sometimes they can only make it a certain time, so we can help them. We can help those with very low reading levels, which they aren't equipped for, and our services are free. We're also very excited, met with, got to meet Julie Oberlander, and next week, our new president, Shannon Ritter Osborne, who we're really excited about, is going to meet with the Collective Impact Education Committee and look at how we can best collaborate in the community. It's very important for us that we do not duplicate services, but that we fill that very important need, that adults who want to improve their reading, writing, speaking, listening skills are able to do that, that there's not impediments to that. And so we're really working with that and excited to collaborate in that way as well. What the statistics we found are is that there's probably about sixty thousand adults in South Dakota who lack basic literacy skills, that have trouble with functional literacy, things, day-to-day things that they're struggling with. Some of the statistics are, it's costing the United States about two-hundred-and-thirty-billion dollars in healthcare, because people can't communicate well, they can't understand some of the different things that they need to improve their health. Also, the workforce non-productivity costs are huge, because as you can imagine, if you aren't literate, you can't communicate well, there's things you miss and you aren't as productive. It's so important to children as well, that their parents can read. The picture there is of one of our amazing tutors, Kathleen Bachelder, some of you may know, and she's tutoring Nikki Dubre there, who is a mother of young children, and her children are so excited to see their mother learning to read. Nikki had been told, when she was going through the school system, that she was dumb and couldn't learn, and she'd had a lot of bad experiences. So it's wonderful and exciting to see her gaining that confidence, and also to see the excitement that her daughters are having when she's able to read, and her big goal is definitely to be able to read to them and help them with homework. We partner with United Ways Campaign for grade-level reading, because oftentimes when kids are struggling, their parents may be struggling too. So we want to do the best job we can getting that information out, that hey, if the parents are struggling, there's help for them too. And if we can help parents, we can help kids. And I'm going to turn it over to Diane now to talk a little more specifically about our tutors.
Okay, our tutors, we have about fifty-nine tutors, right? Fifty-nine volunteers and fifty-two tutors. We trained fifteen new tutors in October, and all of them have been paired up with a student. I want to say all but two, and I get phone calls every week from students who want to be paired. So we've been doing a good job, I think, of reaching out. We advertise at the library, we have posters around, and we get referrals from the Career Learning Center, and that's where a lot of our students come from. More than eighty percent of our students are English language learners. I was going to give you a little idea of some of the countries that they're from, so I wrote these down, as of yesterday. Mexico, Nepal, Israel, China, South Korea, Puerto Rico, Ukraine, Spain, Poland, Pakistan, Brazil, Chile, Japan, Colombia, and Taiwan. So that's a pretty, pretty big variety of learners, and all different levels, from basics to, we have one student right now who is a doctor. He's a medical doctor from Puerto Rico, and he wants to take the boards and become a doctor in the U.S. So he's trying to learn all of the jargon on the medical exam tests, and so we've got wide variety of students.
Peggy, do you want to say a word about your accomplishments of your student this past year?
Yeah, I have a remarkable student. She's remarkable, but I think she's just kind of average compared to all of our students. The thing about Literacy Council is that it's really about empowerment. And my student I've been matched with for just over a year. In January of last year, she got her library card, and she was very afraid of doing that. She thought she would, she didn't deserve to have one, because she wasn't a citizen yet. And the people at the library worked so kindly and sensitively with her to reassure her that, yes, you can have a library card and you can do this. At the end of February, on her second try, she passed her driver's license exam, and when that happened, her husband thought, wow, you're serious about this. So he made a rule, and they would only speak English in their house, which was new for them. She really got moving, and in May, she went with her entire family to Minneapolis to take her green card exam, and after the exam, they all went to the Mall of America for a day, and she did pass the exam. And now we're studying Lewis and Clark to get ready for her citizenship test. And the way she studies is, she, there's a little booklet that we use, and it has about a fifteen-page chapter each week. She reads it herself twice with her eyes, twice more out loud, then she gives it to her sixth-grade child. He reads it, and then he reads it back to her so she can hear it, and then together, they answer the questions. So she's learning it, he's really learning it, and together, they're really making progress. It is very, very exciting.
Lois, do you want to just say a little bit about the conversation class?
Sure. Our conversation class is in its fourth or fifth session now, and we meet two evenings a week at the library. Anybody can come. There's no homework, there's no expectation that you show up every night. We have between four and twenty-one students at a time. It's great. They love to be there. The photograph you're looking at is from our first potluck. We recently had one last week at the library, interrupted by a fire alarm. So we were all on the street at six forty-five. This was Wednesday night, it was really cold, and the Fire Department came and, you know, checked it out. And then we all went back inside the library and continued the party. It's a great group. They bring their spouses, they have formed a community among themselves. Some of them know each other from CLC, some of them know each other because they work together. But it's really wonderful for us as volunteers to see this community building with our students. And as Peggy reported, they're making progress, not just with driver's licenses, but with being more confident at work, getting a better job, being able to talk to either their work, getting a better job, being able to talk to either their... Some of these people are supervisors, so they have to talk to their employees, or if they have a supervisor they need to report to, they have more confidence in speaking with that person. So they work very hard, and we have a lot of fun on Monday and Wednesday evenings at the library. So come join us.
I just wanted to add with the conversation classes that they have become so popular that now we're going to, in January, start a beginning class and an intermediate class. So we're going to get a shot to see if we get enough people to show up for two classes on Mondays and Wednesdays.
Thank you for letting us update you. Do you have questions?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a question. I have a question for Chris.
Glenn Darla has a question.
Just quick. What are your sources of funding?
Well, funding is kind of rough, so we keep our expenses down as much as we can. But the John Tivakuravich Foundation has funded our employee, and that's been real helpful. So otherwise, we get a small amount from United Way, and we appreciate that. And then we're dependent on donations. And this is, having an employee, this is new for the last, you know, couple of years. So we're working on fund development and trying to better achieve that goal because we can't keep relying on the Vekuravich Foundation. We do have a website and a Facebook page that you are welcome to donate. Thank you.
Thank you for that information, and congratulations on your important work. And please continue that for our community. It's such a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're on to general public comment. There are no speaker requests for general public comment. We do have a couple on an item a little bit later in the agenda. So we'll go on to non-public hearing items, items four through fifty-one, and we'll open public comment items four through forty, and also close public comment, seeing no speaker requests. That brings us to consent items four through forty. This is a time when we can take some of these items off and handle them individually. We'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Could we pull item number thirty-two, please?
Jason Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A quick question for item number thirty, please.
Brad Essis.
Make a motion. We approve all items four through forty, less thirty-two and thirty.
Second.
Hey, we have a second by John Roberts. All in favor of approval of those items, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. We'll go to item number thirty, which is to authorize mayor and finance officer to sign amendment to Tyler contract for nine additional implementation days in the amount of $11,475 to be paid from the water fund. We'll go to Jason Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I can ask a question of the finance officer, please?
Yes.
So Pauline, will you educate me? Does this mean that we're getting closer and closer to being able to pay water bills online?
Yes, it does. So we're supposed to be going live with utility billing on January thirtieth, and as part of that is customer self-service. And so our customers can sign up for self-service where they can pay online.
So after this training, when do you think we're going to be ready to go to this new Tyler system?
January thirtieth.
January thirtieth, for sure.
As of now. You know, anything can change between now and then, but it's been pushed back a couple of times. And so they've really been working hard and adding these additional training days will really put our best foot forward to make sure that the go-live date goes without a hitch.
Very good. Thank you. That'll be it. Thank you.
Okay, all in... Sorry, I lost track of what was going on. Do we have a motion on thirty? Okay, a motion by Lorente and a second by Solomon. All in favor of item number thirty, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now on to item number thirty-two. Approve purchase of 2017 Chevy Traverse for code enforcement off state bid from Billion Auto in the amount of $26,315. And we'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a slight clerical correction on this item. If I may turn this over to Jim Gilbert, the IT manager, for clarification.
Okay, we'll go to Jim Gilbert.
This was my fault. I sent the wrong version of the document. IT last bought a car in 2001, so we're a little unclear on the procedure, and I screwed up the document. This vehicle will be for IT. It will be out of our budget, and it will actually be purchased from Beck Motors off the state contract, so.
Makes difference.
Okay, good clarification. So for item number thirty-two, it'll be to approve the purchase of a 2017 Chevy Traverse. Is that still the car?
Yeah.
For information technology from Beck Motors in the amount of $26,315?
Yep.
Is it still state bid?
Yes, still state bid. Beck Motors is the provider for the Chevy Equinox on this, yours.
Okay, can I have a motion, please? I didn't hear it. Okay, Jerry Wright, motion to approve, seconded by Steve Lorente. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Takes us on to non-consent items, items forty-one through fifty-one. We'll open public comment on those items. I have two speaker requests on item number fifty-one. We'll call first on Leonard Bryant. You could approach the podium, please, and identify yourself. And you have three minutes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Leonard Bryant. I've been a representative of Rapid City since, a resident of Rapid City, in other words, since 1971. I was here when the flood came. The reason why I'm here, I'm here for support. I'm a senior. And when I came here, most of you people were in grade school. I'm seventy-nine years old, and I have been with this senior center, which is Menloosa Han Senior Center, ever since 2003. All right. I am president, or was president, until recently when I nominated another individual as president. And what I like to say is that, as a senior, and many other seniors here in Rapid City, and who helped to recover this city years ago when I come here, that are entitled to certain benefits. And one of the benefits is Menloosa Han Senior Center. All right, this is our pride. This is something that we look forward to. And I am also a senior of that center. The thing that I don't appreciate is that, is all the work that we had put in here for the city. The city acts like that they don't care anything about us, and that bothers me. I was a volunteer in this town for thirty-some years, police department, sheriff department, RSVP, Menloosa Han Senior Center, and many more other places I have volunteered for. And I did this without pay. And I'm over at that senior center, and there are problems over there, and I think that we need to deal with them. I was looking at a plaque over at the senior center the other day, and I think the city gave lease this building to us back in seventy-six, okay? And I don't know what any repairs, if any, been done on that building since I've been here. But I know we need repairs now, okay? And look at all the hailstorms that's been here since I've been here. How many times have anybody from the city went over and looked at the roof of that building? Or the insurance company looked at the roof of that building? But yet you tell us that we are obligated to take care of it. I don't agree with you. I think it's your building, and you need to take care of it. Before this week is out, have you noticed the weather? It's like forty, fifty degrees. We're going to be putting buckets out all over that center. And I have some pictures here. If any one of you want to see them, the damage that caused through our ceiling, I'd be glad to show it to you. So I'm asking you, please, to reconsider and give us a break on that building. We have strived so hard since I was president. We had all kinds of damage. Water heaters went out, refrigerators went out, and we had to replace them. So we need your help. I thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll go to ordinances, beginning with item forty-one, and I'll... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You're right. Now we'll go to Rita Wagner, who is the executive director of Menloosa Han. Sorry about that.
No problem. Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate what... I got you. I was going to say president, but what Leonard had mentioned. We have had, we have really been hit this year. And actually, in the last eighteen months, like he said, we have replaced two water heaters, went out the same day. We've done plumbing repairs. We've done, we've had to completely put in new connectivity from the demarcation point to the building. That was like $5,000. We've had DNR there, working on the roof, the air conditioning, HVAC units. There's just been one thing after another, and it's, quick estimate is over $11,000 just in that short period of time. When we're working on a budget of $132,000, that's a lot. It's a lot of money to have to come out of our meager little budget. And we do have a fund for maintenance or for capital improvement, but that essentially wiped that out. So we've been rebuilding that fund, building, paying back to that fund so that we can be prepared for the next event. But we're working with a forty-year-old building here, and these repairs are coming faster than we can prepare our budget for. So we'd like you to reconsider your recommendation not to assist in the funding of the roof repair. Do you have any questions? I'm here to answer.
When we're, when the item is up on the agenda, the council may choose to ask you some questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're on to ordinances, starting with item number forty-one, and we'll go to our legal finance chair, John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item forty-one, first reading ordinance number sixty-one fifty-two regarding supplemental appropriation number six for 2016, and I recommend approval.
Okay, we have a motion by Roberts, a second by Steve Lorente. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item, please?
Forty-two, second reading ordinance number sixty-one forty-nine, an ordinance to revise the calculation for the utility rate relief program by amending section thirteen point zero eight point four three zero C and thirteen point one six point three six zero E of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I recommend approval.
Second.
Here we have a motion, and we have a second by Lisa Modric. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Forty-three, second reading ordinance number sixty-one fifty, an ordinance to revise the late fees applied to utility bills by amending section thirteen point zero eight point four seven zero, thirteen point eight five point, thirteen point eight five one zero, and eight point zero eight point zero seven zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I recommend approval.
Second by Steve Lorente. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Forty-four, second reading ordinance sixty-one fifty-one, an ordinance to repeal the rebate program for appliance and fixture installation by deleting section thirteen point zero eight point four nine five of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I recommend approval.
Second.
I have a second by Lisa Modric. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. And now we'll go on to legal finance committee items, starting with item number forty-five, and we'll go with John Roberts again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item forty-five, discussion on revised 2016 city council mission and vision statement. And this was continued from the December fifth, 2016 council meeting. I will not make a motion. I'll let one of my colleagues do it.
We'll go to Jerry Wright. Okay, we have a motion for approval by Wright and a second by Lorente. All in favor of approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item forty-six, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Approve resolution 2016 dash zero nine six dash A, resolution adopting a conflict to interest policy for elected and appointed officials. And this was continued from December fifth, 2016 council meeting. So I won't make a recommendation yet.
Let's go to city attorney Joel Landeen.
Thank you, Mayor. We still haven't got that in final form yet. Unfortunately, I was out sick a few days last week, and Carla and I are still talking about it. I would ask the council to continue it to the legal and finance meeting, I believe, January tenth would be the first one in January. And just with the holidays and stuff, I want to make sure that we get it right, and we don't have to keep continuing it. So I think if we take it to the meeting January tenth, we should have it ready.
Okay, Jerry Wright makes a motion to postpone item forty-six to the January tenth legal finance meeting, and seconded by Lorente. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Forty-seven, please.
Human services subsidy fund allocations. And in legal finance, we recommended taking this to council without recommendations, so I am not going to make a recommendation. We can discuss this item, hopefully.
Okay, I see no speaker lights. Go to John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll jump in real quick because I know Patty Martenson had brought this forward because the front porch coalition funding had been taken off of there. And I know it's pretty dear to Patty in my heart. Can I ask Barbara a quick question on this, if you don't mind, Barb, since you're sitting out there?
Yes.
Do you sit on this board, Barb?
I am not on the board.
Okay.
I present the cases to the board.
You present the cases, okay. Do you have any idea why it was taken off? I did notice that one of the subsidies, I believe it was for the 211 helpline, had doubled. And then there was a few that had been just completely taken out. I was just wondering if you had any ideas, reasoning behind that?
Well, the number-one consideration is, we have 102,000 to give out. We received requests for over 501,000.
I saw that.
Five times what was requested. There were thirty-one applicants. Three of them had been put on the general fund. So number one, somebody's going to have to get cut. That's the bottom line when you have thirty-one and only 102,000 to give out. There was a lot of discussion about all of the allocations. The committee is made up of other funders in the community who know all the agencies, and they evaluate all the agencies on a number of different factors that include how they handle the money, how stable is the agency, how are they on their reporting, are they timely, and dispersments, a number of different factors. And it was decided that this was one that, well, and I'll also say that in the last year or two, they changed how they were doing funding. Before, we used to give a little bit to everybody, so everybody'd get a thousand or 2,000. But the problem is, that's not enough to do any real accomplishments for agencies. And with the collective impact and our strengthening families task forces, they narrowed it down to a number of key highest, highest... down to a number of key, highest, highest priority issues. And the decision that was made of that committee was that we would give more money to fewer agencies, so that we could actually see some real accomplishments towards those highest priority issues. And to be honest, this has never been one of the top priority issues. The numbers are fairly small compared to homelessness and affordable housing and some of the other issues. So in the evaluation, this was just not chosen for funding.
And I can understand that. I remember when I first got in the council in 2011, and somebody had mentioned I should be the liaison for Front Porch Coalition, and I said, "I don't see a reason for it", you know, "It doesn't affect me." And then three years later, my son committed suicide. So when people are affected by it, it changes their priorities. So, you know, it's a shame, because they run on a very tight, limited budget, but they do so much good for the people that are affected by it. You know, I don't know where my wife would be today without the lost team and without the people through Front Porch Coalition. So it was, it was very sad for me to see even three thousand dollars being taken away from a, you know, a group that, if you see the small amount of people they touch, how much it does touch them, and how much it does change these people's lives. So, anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
We'll go to Jerry Wright.
How much is the request for funding? Was it three thousand? How much was it?
No, they requested twenty-five, I believe. Let me look here.
Thank you, thank you. Well, I know in the past we've had...
I'm sorry, they requested fifteen, fifteen.
Thank you. I know in the past, we've had some issues in the community that, it appears in this one, we simply do not have enough money to go around. So maybe if our press would put a little story out, that the Front Porch Coalition needs a Christmas elf to help them, and maybe someone with a kind heart in his community will help them financially this time around, and I think we'll have a miracle by tomorrow night. It works. Thank you.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve the recommendations as proposed.
Your mic working?
It's...
So the motion is to approve what?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve the Human Services Subsidy Fund allocations as recommended.
Okay, thanks. And then we have a second by Jason Solomon.
If I may?
Yes.
There we go. Now it's, now it's blasting. I just wanted to update the folks, and I want to say thank you for Patty to come into this meeting to give us a, you know, a moral support, but the key person that's missing on this is Stephanie Dixon, and I'm sad to say, I'm not seeing her in the audience tonight. And with her presence, I feel a little bit differently, but, but we've visited with Front Porch Coalition on a couple of different occasions, try to help them, to strengthen them, and Darla Drew, an older woman, Darla Drew has, also came along with me to assist this group, to see what we could do to help them out, to get ready for this. And unfortunately, they didn't take our suggestions or recommendations. That's not the main reason, and I'm not, shall I say, not supporting them, but they need to help themselves as well, and unfortunately, they haven't proved it to the community as well. And I'm not trying to be very derogatory about the Front Porch Coalition, but there's, there's some other ones that's on this list, too, that need, need to be helped out as well, in some other fashions. But right now, if they would take a little bit better counsel from, from not only us, but some other folks that would be able to help them out, I would be more supportive of the actions that we're trying to promote here tonight. But without those, without that Front Porch Coalition being able to help themselves, I just can't support any alterations or changes to this recommendation. I'd like to see them do a little bit more, so, and maybe we can see what happens next time around. Thank you.
Okay, Darla Drew.
I believe my question is for Barb Garcia. It might actually even be for the mayor, too.
Okay.
You guys talked about, a little bit about collective impact with this, the new recommendations. Is there any other group that is really doing the, this work, the suicide prevention work? Is that happening anyplace else at this time, by any other group?
Not that I'm aware of.
Certainly churches and those kinds of groups probably do that kind of outreach. Wouldn't that make sense? So there are probably people that do this kind of outreach, that, you know, maybe we, just this group is, really, when I met with them, they really seemed very tired. I can only imagine that this type of work just drains your soul, and maybe they just need a new shot in the arm from somewhere else, from some other group, from some other committee that can help them. But, but you're not aware of any group that actually does this type of work right now?
Other than ministers in the various churches that do outreach to their own parishioners, I'm not aware of another group actually working with them, no.
Okay, thank you. And Mayor Allenders, with your, with your collective impact, is anything being done along these lines of suicide outreach?
Well, I think there's maybe a misunderstanding about what the Front Porch does. I think primarily, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think primarily, they are the support for the surviving family members. There are things such as the Suicide Prevention Hotline, and the various providers in the mental health network citywide, but I wouldn't say that this was not chosen for funding based on collective impact, for one, for one thing.
Okay, so, but I'm kind of getting the feeling there that this is being handled in different aspects of our community, so I think I will go along with Richie's recommendation of approving this, this list of funding. Thank you.
We'll go back to John Roberts, forty seconds.
Forty seconds. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was gonna tell a real quick story about, one of the things that, probably the most important thing that I think the Front Porch Coalition does is their lost team. When the suicide occurs, they have a group of people that go out and console the surviving members of the family, and put them on a path of getting back to normal. The first one I went on to was, two years ago, January first, when a good friend of mine, one of my best friend's fathers committed suicide, which was just a little over a year after my son did. And yes, the people that do this are tired. We're tired of seeing people that we love commit suicide. But it is a program that is very, very well-needed, because a lot of these people without this, what do they fall on? They fall on drinking, they fall on drugs, they get divorced, they, you know, these people are the support of the people that are hurting, and, you know, it's just a tremendous group, it's a tremendous amount of people, but I will agree, a lot of them are tired. You know, we have people that have been doing this for forty years, you know, and it's really hard to find people that want to do it, and want to get in this, and want to, you know, but it's, it's a way to give back, you know. I know, I went over a year before I even told anybody that I had a member of my family that committed suicide. There were certain people that knew, but the first time that I spoke publicly about it, it was very liberating, because I had the feeling of, hopefully, I'm helping somebody out there. Hopefully, somebody is seeing that, you know, suicide is, it happens everywhere in the community. It doesn't matter if you're poor, it doesn't matter if you're rich, it doesn't matter if you're educated, it doesn't matter. It, it just happens everywhere, and we never know when it's gonna happen again, and there's so much more that needs to be done with it, and I just, I just hated to see any funding at all go away from them. So, thank you very much.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. If I may answer a question that older woman Drew brought up about merging with another, another agency, the short answer is two-one-one also has it up on their website, that they do counseling of this sort as well. So, there is, there is another resource out there that, that could help them out, if, if Front Porch Coalition can no longer help them out. And I believe they still want to remain, remain somewhat helpful within the community. And I do agree with older woman Drew that several of the, well, the staff is just exactly correct, they are tired, and they're just, it seems like it's just, it's time for some more changes over there as well, not just the staff as well. Thank you.
Brad, uh, let's see, wait. Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, just quickly, I am, I am the liaison to the committee on behalf of the City Council for the group of public volunteers and citizen group that, that makes these decisions, and I can tell you that, that, there's, I mean, John, my heart, I, I have no idea what you, what you've gone through, and I, and I know you're not looking for, but I, I have no idea, but there was, I mean, they sat there and they tried to divvy up a hundred and two thousand over five hundred and one dollars, and, and I tell you, it was, it was, it was a hard decision for them, and, and I think they wanted to, to do, to, you know, there's just way, that's the problem we have in this community. We have way more social needs than we have, we have money, and I, we've seen that on the Vision Funds. I mean, there's, you know, a vast majority of the money requested was for social needs in the community. So I, I just want you to know that I sat there and personally watched, and watched them deliberate over all the requests, and, and I can't sit here and tell you that I could beat my, beat the dais until my knuckles are bloody and tell you that they got it wrong. So, it's, you know, you might change one or two people on the group, and you might end up with a little different answer, but for that group, this is, this is where they came. So, I just thought I'd share. Thanks.
Okay, motion on the floors for approval of item forty-seven. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say no. Motion carries. Now on to item forty-eight under Capital Improvements Committee items, we'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Item forty-eight is Capital Improvement Program Committee Monthly Update for November 2016, and this action was taken to council without recommendation, and I'll yield the floor and let my colleagues talk about this first.
Does anyone know what we're talking about? Jerry Wright.
I thought there were members on the council that wanted to discuss the minutes. I mean, if not, I make a motion to approve as the minutes were submitted.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of forty-eight. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say no. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Item forty-eight is the approving of the cooling system for the servers, server room in the CSAC building. The recommendation was to take thirty thousand from the operational budgets if available, otherwise take it from the CIP contingency, and that's my motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, and then we have a second from Jerry Wright. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, I'll, I'll just put two cents in. This is a great example of how a need such as this, a cooling system for a server room with a very old cooling system, goes out and creates an emergency. Now, it's estimated the cooling system is around twenty-five years old, so twenty-five years ago, the number of servers in that room wouldn't have been near what they are today. The needs may not be the same, but these large-dollar items such as this have got to be on a replacement schedule that will keep us out of an emergency condition. Having said that, we have a motion for approval with taking thirty thousand out of Capital Improvements contingency. Am I correct? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, Mayor. It is to, taken from operational budget, if, if it's available. Then we go back to the CIP. If it's not available, then we'll come back to CIP.
So are you seeking with this motion to do one, and if it doesn't work, do the other?
Correct.
Go back to the drawing board on this. I'm not understanding the motion, and I think the motion is possibly not appropriate in the way it's worded, so let's go to Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The request was to take from CIP contingency, and at CIP committee, the conversation was to see if all of the departments that benefit from the cooling room for the servers had money in their budgets to go ahead and pay for it, being split up amongst the budgets. I will tell you, at that point, I was not in favor of looking at each individual budget, because as you approved earlier, we have our year-end final supplement appropriation, and so there's a lot of departments that are already trying to supplement their budgets for their existing operating costs, especially when we have an organizational budget for the CSAC building. And so that's the budget that I looked to today, to see if there was any money available, either in the Repairs and Maintenance Line item, or Professional Services Line item, and unfortunately, there is not. And so at this point, my preference would be just to use the CIP contingency for this.
Okay, we'll go back to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. If I may make a substitute motion, is to take the funding from the contingency, CIP contingency, for the, for the cooling system for the server room in the CSAC building. That's my motion. Take it from the CIP contingency.
Okay, we have a motion, and then a second by Brad Estes. Jerry Wright.
To clarify, as was written in the agenda, was that if there were operational budget money available, we'd use it. If not, we'd use CIP money, and it was not necessary for them to come back to CIP. It was a done deal, so they could move, because it was urgent. That was my understanding, correct? That was the intent of my motion, if that was not clear. It was as written here. Thank you.
Thank you. Darla Drew.
I was going to add, my understanding of this CIP meeting was also, this is shared by the school system, so some of that cost is, will be borne by the schools. This is our share, yes, I know, but for people that are out there that don't understand, this is not the full cost. We are sharing this with the school system.
Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. If I may, if I could ask the finance officer a question, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Pauline, where are we at with CIP contingency? Of what capacity? I mean, knowing other things demanding CIP, I mean, where are we at with that contingency?
Good question. We typically budget three hundred thousand for CIP contingency. At the time that we went to CIP committee on Friday, there is over, a little over sixty thousand left, so this would take about half of it, and then it expires, the rest expires at the end of the year.
Right, very good. Thank you.
Mayor, the other reason I'm supporting this motion is to reemphasize the point that a lot of these departments are coming in with additional supplementals for their budgets, so I don't see that it can be fair to these other divisions and departments as well to kick in the additional when we're already supplementing them. So, it's just a fairness issue.
Okay, the motion on the floors for approval of item forty-eight A. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say no. Motion carries. On to item number forty-nine under Community Planning and Development Services Items. Request by WIS Associates Incorporated for Watershed Development LLC for a preliminary subdivision plan... subdivision plan, as noted in the agenda item. And the recommendation from committee, well, let's see, at the High Point Ranch subdivision located in section twenty, Rapid City, Pennington County, generally described as being located northwest of the intersection of Poppy Trail and Dunsborough Road. The recommendation from committee is to approve with stipulations.
I approve with stipulation.
Sorry. Okay, we have a motion for approval from Brad Estes and a second by Jerry Wright. All in favor of approval of item forty-nine, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number fifty, a request by Fisk Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers for Bank West for a preliminary subdivision plan for Propose Lot Two of Stony Creek South, number two subdivision, generally described as located in the southeast corner of the overview lane and Nugget Gulch Road intersection. The recommendation from committee is to approve with stipulations. I have a motion for approval by Jerry Wright and a second by Jason Solomon. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number fifty-one is discussion on Minna-Loosa Han Senior Center Roof Repair. We'll go to Jerry Wright.
Thank you, Mayor. There's an April Malik in the crowd that wanted to discuss that issue. Does she have some comments? Would you care to go to the podium and? My question is, how may you assist us in this deliberation? Any comments, please?
Yep. So, my name's April Malik, and I actually rent the Senior Center kitchen to cook. I have a small business called Tyto Go that I cook food out of the commercial kitchen there. So I wanted to just present to you another point of view. Not only is the Senior Center a wonderful place for the seniors, it's a very nice commercial kitchen in a very good location, but has a lot of potential that is probably not utilized, which could provide more revenue for the seniors. I recently went to the South Dakota Local Foods Conference in Mitchell, and there's a lot of push right now to try to encourage Americans to produce their own food, kind of go back to your roots, knowing how to not only produce it, but also how to store it, canning, whatnot. Good for our culture and society. We're already talking about very difficult things tonight. All these things that would enrich our culture and society, cooking classes. So, I just have become aware of the opportunities, and also intergenerational activities that are very good for not only the seniors, but also for young people. And cooking and teaching those type of things are ideal. Just good for everyone, and so there's a lot of potential there, so I'm just asking you to take care of that building, because I think there's potential that has not been, no, I mean, there could be more done about it, and so, thank you very much.
Mr. Wright, you have the floor. John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You knew I was going to have to get my two cents on this again. You know, this is a difficult issue, and I understand that, and I know as a board, probably going to be looking at coming back to the city within the next few months to renegotiate the lease, because I think it needs to be a lot clearer, and I think once every forty years is probably a good time to renegotiate a lease. But, one way or another, I imagine we're going to find a way to fix this roof, or at least get it patched for now. I know we have a lot of concerns on the board as far as, you know, we do a minor fix right now, do we do another minor fix a year from now, two years from now? We did discuss in CIP getting on the CIP to replace the roof, you know, that will be on hopefully the next one that comes next spring, but where are we going to be on there? Are we going to be five years out, or are we going to be, you know, five years out and maybe get pushed a few more years after that? You know, I mean, we are just extremely concerned right now, and I think that one of the next discussions we may have in the board is getting ready for the next Vision round of funding and maybe put a package together for a lot of the things that need to be done, because the roof's just the beginning. I mean, we need new windows, we need new doors, we need, the building is forty years old, and it's had a lot of use, and it's had a lot of life, and we want to see it go another forty years. So it is very important for the seven hundred people that use it, seniors, and for the other groups that come in and use it. We are always looking for new ways to generate more revenue, because we know we need it as time goes on, because the only other option is to raise dues. We're trying, we're refusing to do that, because we have such a large amount of limited income people that use the center, we don't want to push anybody away. So, we're going to find a way, I guess, to get it fixed. As soon as we possibly can get the money, we'll have it done. Thank you.
Richie Nordstrom. Thank you, Mayor. First, may I make a motion to acknowledge this discussion?
Okay, we have a motion to acknowledge seconded by Laurenti. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out to the council members that the Journey Museum was coming forward with support for the Minna-Loosa Han in the amount of ten thousand dollars from their CIP funding, but because of technicalities, we can't do that from the Journey Museum. There are some ordinance issues that we have to comply with, so, otherwise, we was trying to work that out. So, just wanted to make sure that the council was aware of that, and, because they are neighbors to us at the Journey Museum, so we were willing to help them out. However, some of the other issues that need to be brought up, and I applaud Darla Drew, the Alderwoman Drew, and Alderman Roberts for participating in the day-to-day activities of the MSC, the Minna-Loosa Han Senior Center. However, there's some concerns that I have on it. I have not seen an annual report, maybe I missed it, but I haven't seen an annual report from the Minna-Loosa Han. Plus, there is no, as far as I know, there's no strategic planning that's been done for the Minna-Loosa Han Center as well, and they need to do that. And from the reports that I just received tonight on the amounts that have been given to the Minna-Loosa Han Center, there's quite a bit of money that we've been giving to the, or subsidizing or investing into the, into the Minna-Loosa Han Senior Center as well. So, it just got a lot of areas of concern if we make some changes on it, and it's trying to address this, it's a good start, trying to address this lease agreement, because I know there's some other nonprofits out there that want to try to do that as well. So, with that, with that, Mayor, that's my two cents worth on tonight for the Minna-Loosa Han, and I do also want to acknowledge Lynn for being my Master of Arms when I was Chair or Commander of the VFW. He was my Master of Arms at that time, back in the nineties. So Lynn, thank you very much for your service for the community and to the VFW as well.
Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions for Barbara Garcia, if I could, please.
Yes, you may.
So, I'm looking at a report here that was given to me about the grant funding provided by the city to the Canyon Lake and Minna-Loosa Han Senior Centers. Could you take me through just a quick rundown on both of these items, because I'm seeing some surprising, surprising numbers here?
Well, the first group of them is the community development funding that has been given to the two centers over the years, and we took it back twenty years since everybody was requesting information about it. And Canyon Lake Senior Center has gotten two hundred and sixteen, two oh nine, over that period of time, and Minna-Loosa Han's received two seventy-eight, six forty-two in funding for various renovations to their buildings. And then the bottom section is what the Human Services Funds, which typically have been for operations over the years. Both of them have gotten those same amounts pretty much for all of those years. Our records didn't go all the way back since I took them over just a couple of years ago, but from what I could tell, they've pretty much gotten that same amount for all those years for operations. And you'll see that in one case, Minna-Loosa Han gets more for operations than Canyon Lake Seniors, but in the work that's been done on the building, Minna-Loosa Han's received more money. It was longer ago, and Canyon Lake has received a fair amount recently.
Okay, and just a little clarification here from a thing that came up at CIP. Now, in 2014 and 2015, were these funds applied for by the Minna-Loosa Han for any projects?
No.
But in 2016, they applied for?
No, for 2017, they applied.
For 2017? They did apply?
The current one that is under the thirty-day comment period.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all I need to know. I'd like to ask Rita a couple of questions, please. So Rita, when did you begin work with the Minna-Loosa Han Center?
Roughly two years ago.
Two years ago. So when you got there, you probably didn't really understand that you were supposed to apply for these things, or you didn't really know that this kind of grant, granting was available? No one told you? I mean, I just, I don't understand why, as a director, you wouldn't, you know, try to get some money from these funds to help with the roof repair.
Well, at that point in time, I wasn't even aware that there was a roof issue.
Okay. So. So, when did the roof start to be an issue?
It's been steadily a problem for probably the last year or so.
Probably a year, so that's all you've had to really get ready for this, because I've been working with you guys on some of the bids and things like that. It's my estimation that I think we can get this fixed probably with funds that you guys raise or funds from the public. I don't really get the idea that this group is going to probably fix your roof to the point that you want it, but to fix it so it's serviceable until we can put on a new roof. That's not an unusual thing to happen when you have a city building, so you just should kind of be aware of those facts, that they come up. I've been at your meetings, I've seen your fundraising efforts, and I think you're doing a good job. You're moving in the right direction.
Thank you.
You've got a little bit of work to do on dues and some other things like that, though. I think that, you know, there might be people that would be willing to spend more at your center if asked. So, as I was telling another member of my, of this group earlier tonight, one hundred percent of people who were not asked did not give. So that's one of the things that I think that, you know, maybe I can help you with stepping up on your fundraising. But I think you are headed in the right direction, and I think that you'll be able to manage this facility, and I know it can't be easy, so I'm just giving you some encouragement to have the confidence that you are doing good work and that this is a community that supports good work, and I think you'll find the help that you need, but I just don't think we're going to get it from the city tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a motion to acknowledge on the floor, correct? Not sure why this item's on the agenda tonight. Not sure why there's no specific request for funding tonight. I just have a feeling the way things have gone down here with this Minna-Loosa Han roof over the last several months, that it's been used as a way to pit the center against the city. And we heard from the gentleman this morning that he deserves better, and it's the city holding him back. It's the city who's doing wrong here. And as we see from the reports, the city has contributed in the last twenty years seven hundred thousand dollars to the Minna-Loosa Han Senior Center. That is a long way from nothing. And, so, we've had engineers and contractors on the roof of the Minna-Loosa Han since this roof issue came up, and they've taken photographs of the roof, and I have seen the roof. In their professional opinion, the roof has got ten years of life left, with the exception of the hole and the door to the air conditioning unit that has come off. And so the highest of the repair estimates, I believe, is about three thousand dollars, and we have a contract, the Minna-Loosa Han's a city-owned building, it's a city asset, and we have a contract with Minna-Loosa Han for its use. And yes, that, that contract is forty years old and probably should be renewed, but the contract pretty clearly states that the maintenance, including the exterior of the building, is the responsibility of the Senior Citizen Center, and buildings are expensive and things break down just when you, just when you can't afford them to break down. So, there's, I'm saying nothing poorly about the Minna-Loosa Han. I am for senior citizens. I'm becoming one as we speak, but this is just a common sense issue for me. In November, I sent a letter to Rita Wagner acknowledging that there's needed roof repairs, and in review of the agreement, it seems to be the roof remains a responsibility of the center, and so I asked her to make arrangements to repair the roof or notify me as to the reason for not taking action on this matter, and also noted in the letter that the best way to prevent additional damage is by fixing the leaky roof, and received no response to this letter. So, I'm not trying to be cold or flippant or dismissive. I understand there's an issue. The three thousand dollars divided by seven hundred members is four dollars and twenty-eight cents, and if, whether or not there's an entitlement to a roof every time it leaks, I think that's a different discussion. So I could say, yes, bring back the contract and let's negotiate, but I think the, I think the likelihood of the city giving a building for use to a private entity, and then the city promising to provide maintenance to it is a stretch, and it would have the ears of all of the other city tenants perk up. All of the other people that are in city buildings would then need the same thing. So this is a, this is an unfortunate way that this has all come up. I think this could have been resolved pretty easily behind the scenes if we had a few people talking about it, and that didn't happen. So, I'm sorry for the condition of the roof. There's a motion on the floor to acknowledge this discussion. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now on to public hearing items fifty-two and fifty-three, and there are no speaker request forms for those, so that'll take us to consent public hearing items fifty-two and fifty-three. Anyone want to remove those items?
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Estes to approve fifty-two and fifty-three, seconded by Laurenti. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number fifty-four is the bill list, and we'll go to Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no additions to the bill list, so the total is that which is attached at four million, three hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and eight cents.
Motion to approve by Laurenti, seconded by John Roberts. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Motion to adjourn, anyone?
To adjourn. Second.
Motion to adjourn from Laurenti, seconded by Solomon. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned.